I hear you, I hear you.
Thank you.
Thanks, good to see you.
Good to see you.
All right, the mission will be a check.
Okay.
That'll be good.
Congratulations.
A pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. The United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. If you please remain standing and bow your heads for the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thank you all.
Hey, good morning, everybody. Our next public workshop will be Tuesday, November nineteenth at ten thirty a.m. Our next regular meeting will be Wednesday, November twentieth, also at ten thirty a.m. in this room. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated October twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four, and the regular meeting dated October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Because they're not done in a written form and they're using audio and video, which often skips, it doesn't, and people are required to say their names before they speak, and that doesn't happen. They're not compliant, so I'm voting no.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number three, based upon the substance of Trumbull County Assistant Prosecuting Attorney Jason Toth's November first, two thousand and twenty four letter to the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners gives its informed consent to the Trumbull County Prosecutor's Office, including Mr. Toth, to represent multiple clients, including Mesopotamia Township, in the review of an R.C. five-five-three-five point zero eight agreement to resurface portions of County Line Clark Road, Gates East Road, Wilcox Road, Sweet West Road, and Laird North Road in Mesopotamia Township drafted by Tanya Rogers Esquire on behalf of the Board of Commissioners.
Excuse me, motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number four, based upon the substance of Trumbull County's Assistant Prosecuting Attorney Jason Toth's November first, two thousand and twenty four letter to the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners gives its informed consent to the Trumbull County Prosecutor's Office, including Mr. Toth, to represent multiple clients, including Farmington Township, in the review of an R.C. five-five-three-five point zero eight agreement to resurface Township Highway two-two-two between Stroup Road and Hoffman Norton Road in Farmington Township drafted by Tanya Rogers Esquire on behalf of the Board of Commissioners.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number five is to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act funds, and this is for Warren Family Mission. And near the bottom, Commissioners, this is a one-time grant to Warren Family Mission in the amount of fifty thousand dollars to be used for Warren Family Mission's improvement of its facility to install an air conditioning system.
Make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number six is to enter into an agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and Warren Family Mission as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel to provide funds for the improvement of Warren Family Mission's facility to install an air conditioning system, and the Board of County Commissioners allocates the sum of fifty thousand dollars to Warren Family Mission.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Okay, we have the Executive Director of the Warren Family Mission, Mr. Dominic Marrow. Marrow, we have a check presentation we'd like to do for you.
Thank you. Perfect, yeah.
Real quick, I'd say those are the best three yeses I've heard all year. I'm used to hearing a lot of no, especially at home with my daughter and three. So it's great to have the support of the county and you guys leading the charge in making that lead gift into Operation Cool Down. At the Warren Family Mission, we do not have air conditioners. So if you're ever looking to check out what it feels like to work in a sauna, come down to the Mission during the summer. It gets very hot there. Often, we have to close down during the heated periods of the week where it gets extremely hot. So this gift here is going to be a lead gift into Operation Cool Down in front of one of the phases to provide cool air that Trumbull County residents can get out of the heat in the summer. And so we're very thankful for the county's leadership and commitment to give this gift. And we're just fortunate that we could be a recipient. As we get into the holidays, we're going to prepare for Thanksgiving. We'll be feeding over twenty-five-hundred people, and then we'll be providing toys to children who need this year. We have over four hundred families signed up. And I'm happy to announce with the Commissioners also, next Saturday, well, the twenty-third, in partnership with the Trumbull County Fair Board, Trumbull County Commission, Expenditure Harvest Food Bank, and the Warren Family Mission, we will be hosting a food distribution at the Trumbull County Fairgrounds, and a lot of families will get free food, fresh produce and free food. So we're just thankful for the partnership, thinking that we can provide services for the less fortunate free of charge. Like us, support us, follow us on Facebook, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Dominic, and remind people we are coming up on the end of the year. They are nonprofit organizations, so if you're a business and you're looking for a donation or write-off for the end of the year, please consider Warren Family Mission. Item number seven.
Item number seven is to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act funds, and this is for Community Legal Aid Services, Inc. And Commissioners, near the bottom of the page, this is a one-time grant to Community Legal Aid Services in the amount of fifty thousand dollars to assist with funding the salaries of personnel at the Warren, Ohio office.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eight is to enter into an agreement between the Board of Commissioners and Community Legal Aid Services, Inc. as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel to assist with funding the salaries of personnel at the Warren, Ohio office, and the Board of County Commissioners allocates the sum of fifty thousand dollars to Community Legal Aid Services, Inc.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
I don't believe anybody's here from that organization, so we'll make sure we present a check at a later time.
They might not need to do that.
Item number nine is to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for revenue loss from American Rescue Plan Act funds and for the purpose of entering into an R.C. five-five-three-five point zero eight road repair agreement with Bezetta Township. Commissioners, near the bottom of the page, resurfacing of Township Highway two-zero-one, McCleary Jacoby Road from State Route forty-six to State Route three-oh-five. Located in Bezetta Township, improvements will include partial depth pavement repairs, a point-seven-five-inch leveling intermediate course of asphalt, and a one-point-two-five-inch asphalt surface course in addition to compacted aggregate berms. And on the next page, item number two, the project is hereby authorized and shall be paid for from the ARPA funds in the amount of, and not, an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number ten is to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act funds. And this is floodplain-related studies, MS Consultants' compliance activities, and included MOU. And not on the next page, but the following page. This is for two hundred sixty-seven thousand, three hundred eighty-three dollars and forty-two cents, and this is an agreement with MS Consultants, Inc. for performing floodplain-related studies and reports as required by FEMA to be compliant with the NFIP consistent with the resolution passed on September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and one hundred thirty-two thousand, six hundred sixteen dollars and forty-eight cents compliance measures, including purchase, purchasing land, contracting for specific mitigation activities, conducting necessary studies to improve flood mapping to be performed by the Trumbull County Planning Commission.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eleven is to award the proposal submitted by Sage Integration for an additional door that has been deemed a security risk in the Trumbull County Administration Building at one sixty High Street in Warren, Ohio, in the amount of five thousand, seven hundred seventy-three dollars and thirty cents.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Because I've received no information with any justification for this or the next item, I'm abstaining.
No?
Abstain.
Motion passes.
Item number twelve is to award the proposal submitted by Sage Integration for the upgrade of panic buttons throughout the Trumbull County Administration Building, one sixty High Street, Warren, Ohio, in the amount of two thousand, nine hundred fifteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. The panic buttons must be upgraded to work with the new security system recently installed in the building.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Also abstain because of lack of information provided.
Item number thirteen is to enter into an agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and Mercy Health Youngstown LLC, doing business as Saint Elizabeth Youngstown Hospital for histology autopsy services. These services are required by the Trumbull County Coroner's Office to replace the services formerly provided by Stewart Health Trumbull Regional Medical Center, and the laboratory service fees are listed there, Commissioners.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
I've heard a discussion. Is there anyone from the coroner's office on the line? Or is the coroner anywhere? Because alls we received was the agenda items without any information. Is anyone? Because unless the rest of the board received something that I didn't, there is no comparison. According to what our procurement is, we're supposed to at least get three quotes if it's something that's not being bid, and I didn't see anything. Plus, I don't know how much the costs were before, and that is an extremely expensive department. Their budget is huge and going up, and I just think it's important to look at that. Has anyone received anything other than what was just placed on the agenda?
This was in their budget last year, a budgeted item, and I have met with the coroner twice in regards to that. Did you call and ask, or?
No, when you send, when you, when you send over the agenda item, you're supposed to send over proof that the proper procurement and all those things occurred, which is why I like to review them. However, instead, they're just being sent to the Human Resources Director and so the Board of Commissioners, which is a problem, but it's not going to be my problem next year. So I just don't have any information supporting that, and it needs to be caught before the clerk puts those on the agenda to make sure that they actually come over and that the proper process was followed, that's all. And I don't have that, that's all. So.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
I'm going to abstain because none of the board has received anything except for, you know, what's here.
Item number fourteen is to receive the letter from Attorney Thomas C. Nader dated October twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, requesting that Deepak Drive located in Howland Township, Ohio be renamed Frankie Lane. Attorney Nader represents Christopher and Rhonda Vilwack, owners of parcel number two-eight-nine-zero-two-five-seven-one, and through their counsel have respectfully submitted a petition for the road name change and are the only owners who use the road for identification and address purposes. The petitioners state that there is good cause for the road name change and that the change will not be detrimental to the general interest. And within the note, there will be a public hearing for consideration of the road name change, and it will take place on Wednesday, December eleventh at ten a.m. here in the Commissioners' hearing room.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number fifteen is to formally approve the submitted Cobra rates effective January first, two thousand and twenty-five through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Again, this is an item that came on, we didn't get, for clarity, we didn't get our agendas until, I didn't get mine until I asked several times yesterday. I didn't get it until yesterday. So other staff, other employees in the county received copies of the agenda. However, I did not. Other, you know, even the Director of Human Resources has the information related to these next few items. She said that she brought it, there's a procedure that's supposed to be taking place, which is that whenever things are submitted, they're supposed to be submitted with a supporting documentation. This was placed on the agenda without any supporting documentation until yesterday. I checked to see if it was left in my office. It wasn't even left with me. So I, I, I mean, this is just the way it happens in Trumbull County, but I don't feel comfortable voting on things, no matter what she says, without actually reviewing those things, and I, and I don't have anything to look at aside from what everyone else is looking at here today. So I'm going to abstain.
You did get an email. You were copied on it. I saw your email on there. We all got the email with all the background information on this. And it was before yesterday, before this morning and last night, so. And we had a workshop yesterday. It was discussed that.
I heard all of it. She said she brought a packet, and it was not here.
Yes, it wasn't put, it was placed in your, in your box.
No, I just went through my mailbox when I.
No, it's in there.
Okay, all right. Just went looking for it this morning, but.
Item number sixteen is to formally approve the submitted chargeback rates to be assessed to departments participating in the health insurance plans offered by the Commissioners commencing January first, two thousand and twenty-five through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
I'm abstaining because I searched for the supporting information, didn't have it.
Item number seventeen is to formally adopt the submitted increase in employment healthcare premium shares for two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
I have to abstain.
Item number eighteen is to authorize the Planning Commission to prepare and submit a pre-application to the Ohio Department of Development for the PY twenty-four CDBG Residential Public Infrastructure Grant Program for a maximum amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the proposed Crane Drive Sanitary Sewer Project located in a low and moderate income area of Weathersfield Township, and to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign and execute any and all documents related to the pre-application.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number nineteen is to authorize change order number one for an increase of forty thousand, five hundred sixteen dollars to the contract with Proscape Septic and Landscape Contractors for two additional HSTS replacements in the amount of seventy-five thousand, three hundred ninety-eight dollars. The increase is associated with the PY twenty-three, PY twenty-four Home Sewage Treatment System Reserve Program, increasing the original contract amount of fifty, fifty-six thousand, one hundred seventy-eight dollars to ninety-six thousand, six hundred ninety-four dollars. And providing a forty-five-day contract extension, extending the project completion date from October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four to December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, and to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign any related documents.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item twenty is to rescind the personnel action for the employment transfer of Mr. Harrison Cole from the position of Sewer Line Maintenance Crew Leader, pay range eight, to the position of Maintenance Worker, pay range eight, twenty-one forty-three per hour with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department, effective Monday, October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item twenty-one is to accept the resignation of Ms. Natalie Brown from her position of Lab Technician with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department effective November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item twenty-two is to award the lowest and best bid response and enter a new contract for Phase One of the Trumbull County Sanitary Lateral Assistance Program to MJD Excavating for the total bid amount of one hundred fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents, which includes batches one through four.
Motion, motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item twenty-three is to approve modification number one to the engineering agreement with Burgess and Nyppel, Inc. for the blueprint Phase Two Water Improvements Project, known as County Project Number two-dash-W-dash-nineteen, located in Braceville, Southington, and Farmington Townships. Modification number one is for an additional four hundred thirteen thousand, seven hundred ten dollars, revising the total contract amount to eight hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred fifty dollars, and includes services associated with additional design engineering due to an increase in project scope.
Motion approved.
Second.
For discussion, this was, this was already approved and completed from what I could tell. Am I wrong about that?
Gary Newborough, Sanitary Engineer. Commissioner, what was your question?
I said, based on what was sent, it looked like it was already approved and completed. The work that they, the work that they, you're requesting that it be modified for to include has already been completed.
It's my understanding that, yeah, there is, some of the work has been completed already, yes.
It said, it's, I believe, based on what it said, is that it was approved in August and it was signed in October.
No, I'm not sure what you're reading there.
Whoa, whoa.
Okay.
Gary, as you explained yesterday, you're, you're merging Phase Two and Three, and you're doing them as one now.
Yeah.
So that's what the new cost is.
Exactly, yes.
What I'm saying is, and you know, and you know this, and for the most part, you've been doing it better, was that whenever there's a modification or an amendment to an agreement, then that needs to come before the board to approve prior to that being done, and in this case, it looks like it was already started before we approved it because it's just coming to us today.
I would say in the areas of Phase Two, there were some areas that bordered on the Phase Three area, so some of that work was done within those areas. You know, having the topo maps, having the layouts of, you know, other storm sewers in the area, that sort of thing.
So you're saying it was still in the previous scope?
Well, the previous scope is contiguous to the scope of the Phase Three, so there's portions of that that are in the area in between.
Okay. Because it's quite a, quite a bit more money if they had already done that to say, hey, we did a portion of this, is what you're saying. To me, to my eyes, it looks like they might have done all of it, but if you're saying they only did a portion of it, and then they're asking for four hundred thousand more dollars, I'm just saying, anytime there's an increase in this, in any, anything. Anytime there's an increase in this, in any, anything.
Right.
It's not, it, it has to come before the Board of Commissioners to approve.
Okay. Before, not. Yeah, I, yes, I agree. Yes. And if they did do work outside the original scope of the contract, that was at their risk.
Exactly, but it looks like, exactly. But what it looks like to me is that now we're saying, oh, you did part of it. So we're going to give you like, like four hundred thousand. I, I don't know.
All right, well.
They're, they're the ones.
Well, we practically doubled this, almost doubled the scope of the project. So this, I, I negotiated this price with them and. I think it was fair amount.
Yeah, you, you, it was negotiated with them and it was done a lot of it already. I'm, I'm just saying. You know what I'm saying? I don't want to be repetitive. I just don't feel comfortable when, whenever things were done. You know, before.
Okay.
Cause then it, it. Like you said, it, it's done at their own risk. So.
Yes.
Anyway, okay, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say no, just because um consistently I've been saying that I don't vote on things. Where the work has already been done before it's been approved by the board in order to get the. Department heads up to speed with doing them and the proper procedure. So I'm gonna just stick with that and say no. Hope that next time they don't do that.
Item number twenty four is to approve modification number one. To the engineering agreement with Burgess and Nyipal Inc. For the Meadowbrook Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project known as county project number twenty nine dash S dash ninety seven. Located in Warren Township. Modification number one is for an additional eight hundred and five thousand, five hundred fifty dollars. Revising the total contract amount to two million, two hundred ninety thousand, fifteen dollars. And includes services associated with additional design engineering for the. Package wastewater treatment plant, construction, administration and inspection, project closeout. calculation of final costs, capital charges and submittal. Of as-built drawings.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
I, I did. For similar reasons and just when you're increasing um a scope by eight hundred thousand dollars, I mean. You maybe could have gotten a better um. Business at the onset, you know, it, it's just, that's a hu- that's a huge modification. Um, and I remembered um back having previous opinions by our prosecutor's office that anything that's. That large of a, of modification really does change the scope. And in those cases, we shouldn't be approving it. It should be a separate project. So I'm gonna vote no.
Item number twenty five is to award the lowest and best bid response and enter into a contract for contract A. For Meadowbrook Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project. Known as county project twenty nine dash S dash ninety seven to APO Horo Company. For the bid amount of thirteen million, forty thousand dollars. Contractor to be paid directly from the Ohio Public Works Commission, the Appalachian Regional Commission. And the Ohio EPA Water Pollution Control Loan Fund. This contract is for the purpose of constructing a three hundred and twenty five thousand gallon per day. Package wastewater treatment plant in Warren Township.
Madam Clark, I don't have that as number twenty five.
That's because this was just, and I wanted to have discussion. These were just added to our agenda. The Board of Commissioners didn't receive any information. About this until la- yesterday or la- yesterday evening. After I myself have already gone through, taken notes on the workshop, the agenda, and then rewrote my notes. The clerk decided at her own uh. Discretion without the approval of the board to add two items to our agenda. Uh, when I asked her to put those at the end of the agenda is not to mess up like my notes. She said it's up to her. She gets to depict how the agendas are, not the Board of Commissioners. And we have a process that's quite strict because my items in fact have been denied. And been, been said, you know, I'm not going to put your things on because they came over on Friday. Now this is coming over. Over a week late because our meeting was backed up by a date and we didn't get this information. But um, that's how things are in county and I won't have to deal with it soon.
We, we did get the information. That was my fault that we did get the information. I just didn't see it on my old agenda. That was my fault. On our new agenda, it is twenty five.
Actually.
But we actually got the information.
Yeah, it's actually n- not our fault. We, with the Board of Commissioners. Of, this is a, I want to just reiterate, this is a Board of Commissioners meeting. It is not a clerks meeting. So the agenda should be approved by the. Commissioners. We should get it in advance. We should review everything in advance and everything that comes through should be following the proper procedure. Not having things added after we've taken our notes, after we've already reviewed our agendas. This just isn't the right way and I don't feel comfortable. Um, having things thrown on last minute like this. And on a side note, we have an item that I've been trying to get on. For a month now that she has been refusing to put on that could cost the taxpayers money as it relates to. Uh, your energy for your electric and gas. So.
I'm fine to proceed.
So I need someone to move.
Uh, 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 I'll move uh, agenda item number twenty five. So moved.
Second it.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
So moved by, was that, so moved by?
Agenda item twenty five.
To approve or deny?
To approve, obviously.
Okay, you just have to do that for the record.
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
I am abstaining because I didn't receive this information until late. I only received a small amount of it and not enough to delve into it and um make a informed decision.
Item number twenty six is to award the lowest and best bid response and enter into a contract for contract B. For the Meadowbrook Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project known as county project twenty nine dash S dash ninety seven. To Woodford Excavating LLC for the bid amount of three million, nine hundred ninety eight thousand dollars. Contractor to be paid directly from the Ohio Public Swer- Works Commission, the Ohio EPA Water Pollution Control Loan Fund. This contract is for the purpose of constructing a sanitary collection system in Warren Township.
Motion to approve. Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Um. Where did you say that that was being made and what township?
Warren Township.
Um, which, wait, where, which item is this?
This is Meadowbrook.
Meadowbrook, okay. Cause I, I'm sorry, I'm still looking at my notes that are, at this point, they're going to be off a little bit. This is twenty six. We're not actually to.
This is contract B for Meadowbrook Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project.
So there were two items that were just added. Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Oh, um, I'm abstaining because for the same reason previously, not having the opportunity to. Look at everything that relates to the agenda item.
Now, from here on in, just add two to your numbers and you'll be back on track.
Item number twenty seven is to enter into an agreement between the Mahoning County Board of Commissioners and the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners. To allow Mr. Douglas Potter, a Mahoning County resident, to connect to an existing sanitary sewer. Located on East County Line Road that is owned and operated by Trumbull County.
Motion to approve. Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty eight is to amend commissioner's regular meeting agenda, item number eight dated November ninth, twenty twenty two. That read to commit seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from senior levy fund number zero six five. For the next two years annually, beginning December first, twenty twenty two through November thirtieth, twenty twenty four. These funds will also be met. Be used to match fifty three ten grant funds from the Ohio Department of Transportation. And to provide countywide on-demand transportation for the Trumbull County senior residents. Amendment is necessary to extend the commitment through December thirty first, twenty twenty four to fully utilize committed funds.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty nine is to amend commissioner's regular meeting agenda, item number seven. And that read to commit two hundred thousand dollars from the sales tax fund. As listed for the next two years annually, beginning December first, twenty twenty two through November thirtieth, twenty twenty four. These funds will be used to match fifty three ten grant funds from the Ohio Department of Transportation. And to provide countywide on-demand transportation for the Trumbull County Disabled Residents under sixty years of age. Amendment is necessary to extend the commitment through December thirty first, twenty twenty four to fully utilize committed funds.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number thirty is to amend commissioner's regular meeting agenda, item number twenty seven dated April twenty sixth, twenty twenty three. And that was to authorize award and execution of agreements per proposals for purchase transportation of Tru- for Trumbull County. Wide transportation service for the period. May twenty twenty three through November, twenty twenty four. Amendment is necessary to extend the current Trumbull County Transportation Contracts until January thirty first, twenty twenty five. Per contract terms and RFP language allowing up to twelve months' extension. All contracted transportation providers have agreed to the extended terms with all other terms of the agreements remaining the same.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number thirty one is to concur with the county engineer to close the following roadway. And that is Dover Street, County Highway one forty seven in Warren Township. For City of Warren Waterline Project and the closing dates Tuesday, November fifth, twenty twenty four through Friday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty four.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number thirty two is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permit for fleet vehicles requested by the company listed. And that's Barrickman Tree Service LLC.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number thirty three is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permit requested by the company listed, APO Horo Company.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number thirty four is to reappoint the following to the Trumbull County Workforce Development Board. All board prospects and or incumbents submitted applications were evaluated and ranked. Those persons are um, Mr. Brian Eskridge. Ms. Kula Galeras Ross, Mr. Gary Hartman, Mrs. Terry Lacy. Ms. Angelica Brewer. Mr. Thomas Harvey and Mr. Rashad Terry.
Uh, motion to approve.
Second that.
Uh, I'd like to discuss this. The, these individuals are not expiring.
Correct, and we.
Did you, did you, okay.
We talked about this at the workshop yesterday. They're condensing their terms, so they all start on the same time. It's midterm for these people, but they're just making it so when they get reappointed next time. It follows in line, so they're all on the same date instead of scattered uh every month and um. Am I correct?
I understand exactly what's going on and, and, and there's really no need to re-explain it. My concern is that you didn't. Bring any of this up in the past. You just decided to do this and then put it on the agenda without previous, you know, emails or anything. A- about this. And then also, these, these are people who are already midterm. We're going to have. W- w- they are midterm. All these people are on here. They're not going to expire. And the reality is.
Yes, the Dimitri Leogus Workforce Development Board, they're all due in the next few months. Uh, you'd always indicated to us that you, you don't want to backdate anything. So what we're doing is we're being proactive and moving and going forward with things.
They're, they're due in the next few months and there's going to be a new board with, with, with two of us not here. And I don't think that our Board of Commissioners currently should be making a decision that should be made next year.
Also, also, we, what we're doing is, is we identified the uh standard operating procedure yesterday in the workshop that identified the process. With this process, we are able, if I am able to absorb all of the applicants, I will just submit it as an agenda item to the commissioners for approval. If there are more applicants than board seats available, then that becomes an email to you. And then you guys decide who you would like. For the board and then I create the agenda item. So under this circumstance. All the reappointments can be absorbed within the board. So that's why I just created the, the board agenda.
Appointments have been coming in, recommended by the Chamber of Commerce. And other entities without even verification that these were um, like, in order to do this, I think you believe, you, I believe you said yesterday that you. Advertised, but you were still giving them to the same people.
No, uh, with, with the, with the, with the chamber is, is there are official nominating entity within the board. So it, the, the, weowa law states that uh all business and all, and within our bylaws that. All nominations have to be done by a business organization. And the only business organization within our board is the Chamber of Commerce. So that's why. When we, when we select our individuals, we have to officially request a nomination from that, from that individual. They don't.
Yes.
They don't pan pick who they want and they send a nomination and they're just the official nominating entity within the board.
They, they, they actually have in the past, but okay.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
Uh, it's new administration. I'm being uh transparent with all the commissioners and it's, it's ultimately your guys' decision who you guys choose.
And it, and it should be the, the, decision of the people next year. I just don't think it's fair to. Say, okay, these are going to be happening in a few months and then, but we're gonna.
Absolutely not. If there's somebody on that list.
My opinion.
If there's somebody on that list that I present to you folks and you guys say, we don't like this individual or where there's a certain reasoning why you guys can. You can, guys can remove them. That's, that's totally your uh, your right to do so, but I'm just bringing them to you for a final dis- for a final approval. So if you guys say no, then it's no. If it's yes, then it's yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I'd like to be streamlined this, Dimitri. I think that makes common sense.
Thank you.
Okay, so I, for item thirty four, Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No, I believe if you should, if you're going to streamline things or change them midterm, it should be done with the new board out of courtesy.
Item number thirty five is to reappoint Mr. Larry Larson as a member of the Trumbull County Board of Developmental Disabilities for an additional four-year term. Commencing January first, twenty twenty five and ending December thirty first, twenty twenty eight.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number thirty six is to reappoint Mr. Mauro Dvasti. As a member of the Trumbull County Board of Developmental Disabilities for an additional four-year term. Commencing January first, twenty twenty five and ending December thirty first, twenty twenty eight.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Or Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Libstein.
Item number thirty seven is to authorize payment to the Treasurer, State of Ohio, Ohio Environmental Protection Agency. For the twenty twenty four Ohio EPA Annual Discharge Fee authorized by Ohio Revise Code. Three seven four five point eleven L four for the Trumbull County Stormwater Phase Two Program in an amount of eight thousand eighty six dollars.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number thirty eight is to adopt a resolution proclaiming the month of November is National Adoption Month. And November twenty second, twenty twenty four is Adoption Day in Trumbull County, Ohio. The theme for this year's National Adoption Month is honoring youth, strengthening pathways for lasting bonds. With a local adoption theme of get powered, get powered up for adoption. The Board of Trumbull County Commissioners recognizes the extensive efforts of probate court judge James Frederica. And the Trumbull County Children's Services to find loving permanent families for all children. In twenty twenty three, in Trumbull County, eighteen foster children had a, had adoptions finalized. Twelve children are waiting finalization through the court and twenty one children are waiting for loving permanent families.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item thirty nine is to transfer. Item thirty-nine is to transfer monies.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mister Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Miss Frenchco?
Yes.
Item forty is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mister Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Miss Frenchco?
Yes.
Item forty-one is to transfer appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I want to discuss this. Under no circumstance should any government body be making this level of transfer appropriations. What happens in Trumbull County is that there is absolutely no budget control. There's no one who actually, uh, under the Board of Commissioners goes back with each department, make sure that they're running on schedule. Uh, and tries to ensure that the budget set at the beginning of the year is adhered to. Instead, what they do here in Trumbull County is they just transfer appropriations, transfer appropriations, and transfer appropriations. And if you look at the explanations for several of these, it's to fix their over-budget. And I just want to say that that is not proper budgeting. I have not been approving the budgets. I don't like the process of the budgets. And as you can see, um, with some of these going up to over six hundred thousand dollars, this just isn't the way things should be done.
This is within departments, though. We've already approved this. This has been budgeted by the Commissioners.
This is an addition.
This is from line item to line item. This is within departments. This isn't new money. So everybody's clear.
This is, but this is not, this is not okay.
This is like moving money.
Budgets are work-
This is like moving money from your savings account to your checking account. It's not borrowing money from anywhere outside.
Have a capital budget. We don't have things, yeah, we just don't have things done the right way. And and we haven't the whole, the whole time I've been here. It'd be nice that if-
Whole time you've been here, we've run under budget, so. Never asked for more money from the taxpayer.
Budget? Not, that's not under budget.
Yes, it is. That's how it works. If you go over budget, then you need to, we can't print money. We'd have to go out and get more money. We've been under budget for the past eleven years.
Don't think you're gonna understand at this point, so it's just not worth it, but.
Which part don't I understand, Commissioner?
You understand the budgeting process to be what you've seen it since you arrived here ten years ago and learned from looking around you. And ever since then, it's been done incorrectly. Th- this should be done in a better format and a better process by looking at other communities and how they do-
By looking at other communities?
They, yes, on how they do their budget. When I came, what I suggested was zero-based budgeting and making sure that we had the staff to do that. No one wanted to do that? Fine. We're basically just winging it in Trumbull County and making sure that everything kind of just meets okay. Some of our departments actually do, not departments, I would say, but some of our boards do outstanding jobs. If we even to look at some of our boards and how they do things, it would be a better example of how the county does. But I'm not here to argue. I just wanted to express my-
I'm not here to argue either. I'm just here to say that we've never asked even for more dollars for a general fund money, and that's a fact. Move, money gets moved around because a budget is a living, working document. That happens everywhere.
Arpa and CARES Act money really saved, uh, Trumbull County a lot because there was nothing budgeted for all the capital improvements and all the-
Your opinion.
No, there, there wasn't.
That's, I respectfully disagree.
Where's our capital improvement budget?
I respectfully disagree with you. You will see it at the budget hearing.
There's no capital improvement budget. Thank God for Arba, right?
What about all those years prior to Arba?
Yeah, the example would be the buildings with roofs falling off of them that are over a million dollars to repair.
Okay, so for item forty-one, can I take the vote?
The demolition that we had to do of the, of the wean building-
That was prior to all these boards.
That was, and there was no preventative maintenance, and there has been nothing to make sure that these buildings are maintained. So those capital, uh, capital needs need to be identified and planned for with the forecast, and there is no such thing.
Mr. You didn't even come to some of the budget hearings. So, I mean, please spare us.
That's not fair.
Okay, so for item forty-one, Mister Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Budget hearing.
Miss Frenchco?
Uh, no, I just don't agree with how this is done, just fixing things.
Item number forty-two is to adopt a resolution.
No, well, I'm making a motion to table agenda item number forty-two because it does not exist. It is, um, there are, uh, resolutions. This item is states that there are resolutions to recognize these individuals, but those resolutions are not complete. They do not exist. We should not be voting on something until they're done. I'd like to table them until next week when they're done. So that we're voting on something that is in existence, and then we could sign them on that date. Because as it stands right now, we're voting on resolutions that are not there. I asked for them. The clerk said she did not do them yet. So there's that. I'm making a motion to table them because we're voting on something that doesn't exist.
Commissioners, I'm in, I'm-
My motion.
Motion dies for lack of a second. I'll make a counter motion to create a resolution recognizing the twelfth annual twenty-twenty-four class of twenty-hundred-and-twenty. Co-sponsored by the Tribune Chronicle and Akron Mahoning Valley Children's Hospital. It's with great pleasure the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to on residents of Trumbull County to officially acknowledge all the accomplishments and contributions made by the individuals. And congratulate them for the distinguished honor, the winners are Tasso Anastasiades, Grace Anderson. Anastasiades, Grace Anderson, Samantha Barclay, Nicolette Cochran, uh, Ellie Fob, Jane Falk, Haley Flinner, Sophie Gardner, Madeline Gassman, Sarah Herko, Kennedy Howard, Christopher Majavik. Uh, Yuri Ellis, Navarro Jimenez, Sonia Pitts, Samantha Plot, Giulia Ragazzino, Monica Ruckman, Courtney Wilcox, Addison Williams, and Isabella Williams.
I'll second it.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Mister Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Miss Frenchco?
I'm abstaining because this resolution is voting on something that doesn't exist.
Right, I made a motion to create the resolution to do it, and that's what we're gonna do.
To create a resolution, is it that, I hope you do understand, Denny, that you still have to redo this item to adopt it, okay? So this is still gonna go back on the agenda next week in order to adopt it. I hope Lisa understands that, that even if you're creating it, so you changed it-
Why are we arguing about this?
That's ridiculous.
You changed it to create it, but it still needs to be adopted, okay? So put this back on next week, once it's created. So, yes.
I don't want to hold the clerk up on that, so I'll withdraw my motion, and I'll change it to create and adopt a resolution.
You can't adopt it, and you can't adopt it until it exists. That's the whole-
I just read what it's gonna say.
No, they're actually separate, and they're, they're all separate resolutions that we sign. They're, they're not just the names of the people. There's actual resolutions associated with each of these. They do not exist yet.
We even have to generalize something like this.
Yes, we do.
We don't.
I don't believe we do either.
We don't, okay.
Never been on the agenda, Commissioners.
We just did it for the senior citizen ones.
Now, it's this, like, this has never been on.
But that, but that's because we're doing things the right way, and we're in open meetings court where there's been a lot of things that were done incorrectly. So when the, when the Board of Commissioner, let me just explain, when the Board of Commissioners signs something that approves something, that has to be done in an open meeting session. So prior there, because of, uh, misunderstandings, we'll say in the past, there's been a rumor that, uh, the Prosecutor's Office said that we don't have to, uh, formally vote on these things. However, if you're signing something, it does have to be voted on. Otherwise, it's the Board of Commissioners agreeing on something outside of an open meeting, and that violates the sunshine law. So that's what we're doing, uh, like this year and part of last year, we've been putting these things on to do, to do them correctly. So that we're not, no one is signing something outside of a public meeting because that's the right way to do things. So I'm just trying to get you to do things the right way. You certainly don't have to, but I, I would, I would vote yes to create them. But just putting this back in on an agenda item next week is not going to hurt the clerk. It's already typed. She could throw it on. Bring the resolutions in once they're created, and then everything would be great, and we don't have to worry about her locking them in the office and not letting me sign them.
I, that-
We have to do that because you take them and don't give them back. Until we beg you, and then you go to your car and get it.
Okay, so, that being said, I don't know where we are right now, but-
But, um, I just want to honor these winners, that's all.
I do too.
We're, we're overthinking this here.
I want to honor them. I don't think it's overthinking to honor them and make sure we're doing it the right way. So, I mean, you might-
If you may create a resolution for these.
I'm sorry, we're, we're, we, we can't adopt, we can't adopt something that doesn't exist. All's I'm saying is let's do it the right way. And let's, it's, we can create them. I voted yes on that, and then once they're actually i- in existence, then we can approve them.
Yes, I'm simp, I'm simply reviewing the language, yes.
Okay, I, I asked for them yesterday to review because it-
Because I'm reviewing them, and when I'm ready to have the Commissioner sign, I will make them available. They're not printed in a, in a formal fashion yet, to be frank.
Sent them for our, for us to see. There's something that does-
Buddy yet.
You said that they don't exist. So if they do, either they do or they don't. And when a Commissioner asks you for something, Lisa, you need to give it to them.
Commissioners, I'm not going to, uh, dignify that with a response.
Oh.
You don't need to.
So I'm, I'm not-
So the motion was, uh-
This is the most basic of things that we, all we're doing is signing, recognizing the people, what someone else did. She was off yesterday. She had a day off. She's allowed to have a day off.
It's been weeks.
We're not gonna hold the process up.
It has not been weeks. We just received the, yeah, documentation.
When did we receive them? Because I-
I'm not gonna get in an argument about this.
I'm gonna make a motion to create and adopt all the resolutions listed below on-
When something comes to the Commissioners, it needs to be forwarded to the Commissioners. Lisa's not, not the gatekeeper of information that the Commissioner should be receiving.
I'm the clerk.
So if something is coming to us, we need to see those things, not just see them on the agenda when they appear and then refuse to give-
Commissioners, these are decreed-
You know, you voted no, we're staying on like half of this stuff. We would get no county business done if we did things your way, nothing. The wheels of motion would stop dead in its tracks.
That's not true. Okay.
You're an obstructionist.
Okay, Danny.
Okay. Make sure you got a motion to-
Make a motion to, uh-
What's the status of the last one?
I don't know. We don't know. We're gonna start from here. The motion is to adopt and create resolutions as listed below in agen- agenda item number forty-two. Very clear and simple.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Mister Cantalamaesa?
Oh.
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Miss Frenchco?
I was gonna say something. Uh, yes, and I just to recognize that, um, our incoming Commissioner, Tony Bernard, was here today. It would have been nice to, uh, congratulate him if the chair chairman would have done that, and also our incoming Sheriff, um, Mike Wilson. So that was, that was nice that they care enough to come to the-
Yeah, it was nice that, it was nice that Rick Hernandez, our incoming Commissioner that replaced you, was there yesterday too at the workshop. Number forty-three, please.
To receive for record purposes from Family and Community Services, Inc., Doing Businesses Someplace Safe. The documents is listed dated November first, twenty twenty-four, and to approve the request of Family and Community Services, Inc., Doing Businesses Someplace Safe. For the release and designation of the Domestic Violent Shelter Funds, Marriage License Fee Monies and Divorce Fee Monies for the year twenty twenty-five. And to notify Someplace Safe of its eligibility to receive these funds.
Uh, motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mister Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Miss Frenchco?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our regular agenda business for today. We do have the meeting next week, and then the following week, there will not be a meeting. We'll have budget hearings on Monday and Tuesday before Thanksgiving, but no regular, no workshop or no general meeting that week. And then we'll resume, uh, December fourth with the next regular meeting.
Okay, so then there's going to be a problem, and I'd like to ask right now that the clerk, we take a recess to allow her to go and obtain what I've been asking her to put on the agenda. For a month now that relates to our energy provider. I, I've asked for that to be done and to be placed.
Did you submit the wording?
Language has been corrected. It's all been approved. She said that she's putting it on next week, but it needs to be on now because there's a follow-up item associated with that. And if we're going to have a gap in that, that's going to disallow our energy provider to identify the cost, bring them to the board for approval. So there's two items that have to go on.
Our contract doesn't expire until March, and we have till December thirty-first to renew with anyone that we do.
Okay, what I'm saying, and, uh, it's unfortunate that-
It's true. It's, that's the deadlines.
I, I know you don't understand this. Hopefully Mauro does, but there is a period of time where they, if they are under contract, then they can actually. Uh, lock in certain prices ahead of that time, and I spoke to the energy provider.
Which one? One of them?
I spoke to one of them. Yes, I did.
There's three of them that-
Okay.
Bits from.
Right, so there's, there's one that I spoke to, and he's already working for Trumbull County right now without even being under contract. Because he knows that if this doesn't get done, it, it's, it could cost the county money. There, there, everyone who opts into the, the program is saving money, and it will revert back to the regular energy rate if we're, if we don't do this correctly. And he finds those rates. He's an energy broker, so we have to have two agenda items. One of them is to, for us to renew our contract with him, which needs to happen, uh, weeks ago.
If, if we own him, that's, that's your opinion.
Needs to happen weeks ago. Uh, it needs, it, it should be on there today. Uh, and then the second one is an agenda item identifying the cost amounts. Because he might be in a situation, or someone might be in a situation where they're not going to be able to get us the rates in order for us to approve them. So we have to have the contract with them and then subsequently, um, approve them. And, and I believe that he thought that there was going to be a meeting, uh-
Supposed to be here yesterday, and he never showed up.
I believe-
The person you're talking to.
There is a, a meeting. Which one are you canceling? So you guys cancel meetings like every other week at this point? You're canceling it on the week of the-
On Thanksgiving.
The, the week of Thanksgiving?
Correct. We have budget hearings Monday and Tuesday. We already discussed this weeks ago.
And this was supposed to be on weeks ago. It was sent in. She just doesn't do anything that I ask her to do.
Special, you have the right to put it on yourself. If you want to do it, write it up.
She's the clerk.
Everybody else does. Every other department submits it.
Right, they have their-
Want her to do your work, but every other department gets their own.
The problem is, is that she's a clerk. She works for the Board of Commissioners, and you're, you're acting like she doesn't work for me, so therefore-
Works for all of us, but that's not her job.
So if I give an agenda item, it is her job to put it on as my administrator.
When you write it up, write it up and send it to her.
As any other department.
Can't use her creativity to create an item for us to vote on. You have to do that.
Just as other elected officials have their staff that submits them on their behalf, what you're saying is that I am not entitled to having a support staff.
I submit my own agenda items.
Okay.
Commissioner Cantamalisa submits his own. If you want something on there, submit it.
I did, I did, and I, I did, and I got the language approved by, by the, she's supposed to be doing this, it's done.
You did not submit it in the boardroom. It would be on there already. You did not do that. You told her to do it.
Commissioners, we send them to the clerk to put them on.
We're, we're above you. We tell people to do our work.
You're disgusting. You're not gonna be here long either. You're next.
Okay.
This is important to the community. It's extremely important.
It is, absolutely is. That's why we need to look at all the offers. We need to entertain the best bids and get the best rates. You're not gonna force us in a rate right now.
This was supposed, this was supposed to be on the agenda.
Satisfy someone that donated to you. We're not doing that.
This was supposed to be on the agenda weeks ago, and she's just refusing to put it on.
Let's move on.
Right, okay.
Okay, does anybody else have anything for the good of Trumbull County from the crowd?
John Shook, Trumbull County resident. Me and several other people noticed that the workshop from yesterday wasn't posted, and I was curious if there was a reason for that.
Yeah, there was no quorum. It wasn't an official workshop.
Okay, but.
It wasn't even supposed to be taped. It was just a me meeting with department heads.
Okay, but I think in the past, we've posted them anyway, even when it was only one Commissioner.
Yeah, we don't have to, though. It's on a public meeting.
Well, it was a public meeting. The public was invited. The public was there.
But there was no quorum, so it wasn't an official meeting.
Did go out live, so some people are.
Wasn't supposed to. That was a mistake on IT.
It's a shame that people don't get to hear what happened in that workshop and what was said.
I wish we would.
You did make it clear in the meeting that it was not an official meeting.
I did.
You did make that clear.
Yes.
But I think it still should be.
Right, and I had no right to make any decisions.
And none were made, that I know.
Informational, right.
So it was just an informative meeting. Like I said, it's a shame that the public isn't going to get to see that.
Right.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.